I'd like to call this meeting to order, please stand for the flag.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Julie, please.
Counselor Gorley.
Here.
Counselor Trask.
Here.
Mayor Gerson.
Here.
Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
Counselor Coleman.
Present.
Counselor Richards.
Present.
Let the minute show that we have six present and one absent, I need a motion to excuse Counselor Mauer from the... Oops.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Do we have to have roll call Julie on that, please? Sorry.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Mayor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
So we have six, six ayes and no nays. Move to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor, Julie, roll call, please.
Counselor Richards.
Aye.
Counselor Coleman.
Aye.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Mayor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
And we have six ayes and one absent. Okay, recognition of visitors? So we have... Josh Victor, would you like to speak to this right now?
Madam Proton, I have a question. Do we want to do the piece for people who are listening in?
Oh, yes, we do, I'm sorry. I'm glad you guys are keeping me on track, thank you.
It's okay.
So Brendan, will you please read the message for people who are online?
Thank you to everyone who is joining us. For members of the public who would like to participate in this meeting, we have some instructions to help if you are new to using Microsoft Teams. Notice the icons in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. The second one from the left is a chat bubble icon indicated with the yellow arrow. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak, please choose the bubble icon to enter the meeting chat, it will appear on the right-hand side of your screen. First, enter your name, address, and phone number in the chat, followed by the topic you wish to discuss. If you wish to speak at any point during the meeting, you can choose the hand icon, also located in the upper right-hand corner indicated with the green arrow. It's the equivalent of raising your hand. Then, the mayor, acting chairperson, or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We'll give everyone a few moments now to enter their name, address, phone number, and topic they'd like to address with the council in the meeting chat. We will ask in the interest of time that people not repeat a previous speaker, instead state you agree with their point or disagree with their point. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes, any extension of that time is at the sole discretion of the mayor or meeting chairperson for the council rules. The moderator will note those joining by phone for the mayor/chairperson. The fact that the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior. The mayor retains the right to have people removed from the meeting as stated in the council rules.
And also Brendan, would you read the mask rules, please?
In order to avoid unnecessary fines from Oregon OSHA for violating the governor's mask mandate, we'd like to note that there are signs requesting people wear masks at the entrance of the building. Masks are available for use at the back of the council chambers, and that this is an audible reminder of the mandate as outlined in OSHA Workplace Advisory Memo 8.13.21.
Thank you. Okay, next agenda item, right? Thank you. So this is a government portfolio advisors. Okay, Brendan, I mean Blair.
I'll turn this one over to Brendan. Okay, we have some guests with us from the government portfolio advisors, they are our investment advisors, they work with me on really ensuring our investments are the best that we can get, and so they have a presentation that they're going to give you on kind of a status update, where things are today, market indicators, and information such as that, and then they'll also be available for questions when we get to another agenda item regarding revisions to the overall city investment policy. So Garrett and Whitney, I believe, are on the phone or on the horn with us, and I will pass this over to them to do their introductions and presentation.
Excellent, well, thank you Brendan, good evening, this is Garrett Cudahy, I am the chief investment officer in a principal at government portfolio advisors. So as Brendan laid out, we help you guys with your investment program, and we just have a few comments today about some progress we've recently made and some efforts that we are going to undertake going forward to put the city in the best financial position possible, as well as later on, we'll talk about some policy changes that are rather minor cleanup, but items that we wish to get moving forward. So I see the presentation is up, can everybody see that okay and hear me just fine?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Well, first of all, I just want to lay out, we've been working with the city for a number of years, but in the summer of 2020, we decided to undertake what we call funding a core investment account. And we'll illustrate this in a few slides later as to what your program consists of, but think of it this way, you more or less have a liquidity component similar to a person's checking account, and that is sitting at the Oregon State Treasury in what we call the LGIP, Local Government Investment Pool, very well-run program, very good team down there, but that acts like cash, so as interest rates go down or up, that attracts that tick for tick more or less, but what we have sought to do is take some excess liquidity, i.e. funds you don't need in the next year or two years, and invest that in some safe, longer-term securities consistent with state statute and very similar to other cities, counties, and government districts, in the search of better, longer-term returns, and that is just to optimize, so that's the first bullet there is, we hope to optimize your interest earnings to support your budget and create a more stable earning environment with your assets going forward. The second is to diversify, as I'd mentioned, as interest rates go up and down, like they are today where the Federal Reserve has them more or less pegged at zero, that'll change shortly, but that's where they are, the Oregon Short Term Fund or the LGIP tends to underperform longer-term investments, again, we'll illustrate that in a few slides, and conversely, when interest rates go up, as they have been in the last few months, the LGIP tends to outperform the longer-term investments that are sensitive to moves in interest rates, so it helps diversify your overall investment portfolio. And lastly, and importantly, especially as we continue to see more and more cyber attacks going around and impacting local governments, a few clients of ours have been pretty severely impacted recently, is to add resiliency. The State Treasury does a great job of keeping their funds safe and being up and running at all times, but we can't always count on that, so having this extra account does give you some financial flexibility and resiliency in that you just have more sources to tap into should you need to or should an emergency, one organization arise. So what are we doing in the account? You know, this is a very conservative, very stable investment program, we largely buy and hold very high-quality investments, we try to target a rather even distribution of securities from, you know, basically overnight all the way out to five years, and it's a very well-diversified mix, mostly treasury and agency securities issued by the federal government, as well as municipal securities, you guys are limited to Oregon, Washington, Idaho, and California, and a handful of high-quality corporate securities, and just noteworthy that all securities must be rated double A minus or better, so a very, very high-quality, stable issuer mix. And lastly, I just want to note, it's a very patient approach in building out your account, we are about halfway through building it out, but as interest rates are rising, we have taken such far, so far it's been a very good strategy, but just slowly adding securities in as we build up to where we are trying to target your overall core account. So on the next slide here, I just want to illustrate some history of your balances, the city has been growing both organically as well as some of the federal stimulus dollars, so what we really do is we work with Brendan and the team at the city to try to articulate, what is your low point and high point in liquidity? So as you can see, over the last year and a half here, your low balance was around $11 million, you can see that's the middle of the three arrows, and so we want to make sure that you have liquidity always on hand, at least of that amount, and of course, this will change going forward, you may need more or less depending on projects or other circumstances at the city, or if your overall balances grow, we may be able to increase the core account. So then what we do is we look at what's the, what's the most liquidity you'll ever need in your lowest time, and we make sure we always have that amount on hand, and then we seek to invest the excess in the core account, so if you see the very bottom arrow, in the longer run, we're trying to target about a $7 million balance, that's about right to balance you out and not have undue risk in meeting your obligations. So on the next slide, what are we, why are we trying to do this and what are we trying to do? If you take a very conservative mix of assets, you can kind of see the top left as a pie chart of what we want your account to look like, so about 20% of it over time will be US Treasuries, about half of it, US Agencies, about 10% in municipal securities, they tend to be harder to find, there's less issuance in that market is why, 10%, and about 20% in high-quality corporate bonds. As you can kind of scan your eyes down to that custom benchmark down in the middle of the boxes, they're in the middle of the slide, this strategy outperforms the Oregon LGIP, it just has a higher yielding capacity over time, so if you stretch your eyes all the way over to the far right, you can see that this strategy has outperformed significantly over just holding your money in the most liquid option, and for most of you that look at investments or even your retirement account, this makes sense, we have the ability to take just an incremental amount of risk by moving out of liquidity into slightly longer-term securities, and you should expect to be rewarded over time for taking that incremental, but still very conservative risk profile, and that's what we're seeking to do here with the city, is just to optimize this so that over, over time, your assets are working harder for you, again, while still being rather conservative in maintaining adequate liquidity at all times. So this is what your, your portfolio looks like as of year-end, I apologize, this slide probably appears a little small, but I will just read it to you, you have a little over 16 million in cash, and only about 2.3 million invested in that core account, remember, we're trying to target the right balance, we think for you is $7 million, but again, we're in a rising interest rate environment, we're in no hurry, the LGIP, the pool should outperform any security we were to place in there today, so we're trying to take a slow and measured approach to layering that in, and so far, that's worked really well. The next slide is just diving into your core account, and you can see what we're, what we're really trying to accomplish, if you look at the yield, this, your portfolio, your core portfolio yields 78.5 basis points, that is well above what the LGIP is currently paying at 45, the LGIP will go up and market yields are significantly higher than 78.5 basis points today, so we want to layer in more investments slowly over time to continue to earn that spread, but we won't invest if we don't have that spread, you're always better off maintaining your money in liquidity if you can earn a higher yield, so again, we're owing to that patient approach. On the right, you can see we're more or less on target with that strategic asset allocation that we think is the right mix for you to outearn the pool significantly over time. Then the middle there is just performance, we are in a rising interest rate environment, so you will see that performance is negative, that is, your price has been impacted down as yields have risen, that is not a long-term concern, you're going to hold these securities to maturity, that is the goal, so we will not book losses as prices fluctuate in the market, that's just a function of how this works, but again, you're a buy-and-hold investor, so this is just showing you that interest rates are rising, which dents the price, but your yield will still remain your yield that you purchased, and we will just continue to earn that through the life of the security. So before we move on a little bit about the markets, does anybody have any questions about what our program goals and strategic targets are, why we're doing this before we move forward?
Doesn't look like it over here.
Okay, excellent. Well, this chart here is just interest rates in the market, I just want to touch briefly about what's going on, it's been a crazy start to the year, it's been a crazy two years, in fact, with a lot of economic wildness, for lack of a better term, but interest rates are on the rise again, you can see these lines, the blue line is the two-year treasury yield, the orange is the three-year, and the green is the five-year, so these represent your investable universe. In the midst of the COVID pandemic, actually in the summer of 2020, they all hit their historically low levels, at that point in time, interest rates around the world were very close to zero in the United States and negative overseas, but economic stimulus, vaccines, and economic reopening have caused interest rates to surge back up toward levels we saw back before the pandemic, so this is good news. Again, it's painful to go through this process, because every day, it's a better day to invest, but in the long run, this is, this is great, this is great for the city and other investors as we're getting more yield in the portfolio for placing money out there. We expect them to continue to gradually rise, but at current, not meaningfully higher, a lot of, a lot of actions already priced in out of the Federal Reserve and the market today, so we think that, that they're pretty fairly valued. This is really what's caused it, is inflation, I'm sure you are all aware of it, we all feel it, we all see it, it's been a surge, and it's really driven a lot by, by the goods sector, and that makes sense, you know, just for a quick number, we put 5.8 trillion of stimulus in the economy here in America in 12 months into a $23 trillion economy, and unfortunately, we, you know, I think in hindsight, that was a mistake, it was too much, and it came at a time when the services sector was closed, and so the goods sector, which is much smaller, about a third the size of the services sector, bore the brunt, people were at home and they bought stuff, well, you can only make so much stuff, and so inflation, especially in cars, computer items, anything with a semiconductor in it, as well as surging gas prices, OPEC has remained very shy on releasing oil and oil demand, and usage has gone back up, so inflation is at 7%, that's about a 40-year high, we expect it to get a little worse before it starts to get meaningfully better, and that is just as the effects of stimulus kind of work its way through the economy, and hopefully, we reopen and get back toward some of the more normal activities should take pressure off the goods sector. And lastly, this is what I was referring to about the Federal Reserve, this is a bit of a wonky chart, I apologize, but it's very important, and this shows how far the Fed is looking to hike rates over the coming years, and you can read each of these lines from bottom to top as calendar years of 2022, 23, 24, and 25, and so the market is expecting quite a bit of work this year out of the Federal Reserve, they expect them to hike rates about five times, I think it's fair to think of a range between three and seven, they're going to do something, and it will really come down to kind of how sticky is that inflation number, and how strong is growth, they do not want to keep hiking rates if growth cools meaningfully, it is going to cool down again with stimulus coming out, but we're not sure how much, they don't want to cause a recession, obviously, and we expect the Fed to raise rates, you can see that top line, to about 1.5 to 2%, that's where we expect to get in this cycle, that can change, it'll be again, a function of inflation and growth, but as of now, the market's really expecting us to get back to kind of the conditions of pre-COVID, so nothing too wild, but, but again, we will be moving up in the next few years is the good expectation. And that's really all we wanted to share, happy to take any questions about the markets or the portfolio or anything elsewise we can help with.
Counsel, have any questions? Doesn't appear so.
Excellent, well, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Victor, did you want to speak to this now?
I could put on a mask if you guys prefer, but I'd prefer not to. Okay, so I just purchased a mill site property, the whole side of there, between Clark Mill and stuff, and I just wanted to kind of throw it out there, not like I'm looking for like a decision or anything right now, but just kind of as an idea, since we have the local improvement district that was approved for the whole bottom side of downtown Tamarack or whatever, abusively expanding that all the way across to Clark Mill and up to 24th and down to the Jamboree property. So like I said, I'm not like, we don't have plans on where those roads are going to be or nothing, but I just kind of want to throw it out there so you guys can kind of start thinking about possibly doing that before interest rates go like super high like they're talking about and stuff, I think it would be a fast track to start really developing the town and that event and doing some really great things, and like I said, I'm not, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there to be thinking about over, as I develop it with the city and stuff, but like, I'm going to be coming back here before too long with a plan that says like, hey, this, you know, this is what I want to do, but I think it would really help as far as spurring the development of that area for the jam, not only for the Jamboree, but all of the rest of the areas to make them actually stuff that, you know, we could start doing stuff on, and most of the road system is in, well, all of the road system is even not in any of the contaminated zones, so it shouldn't affect most of the contamination while starting to clean up and start doing that stuff, but it's on the side that where there is no contamination, so we can make a road system that would not affect any of that stuff, so that was the one thing I wanted to throw out on, just that, but like I said, I wanted people to start thinking about it a little bit.
Counsel, have any questions?
Madam Mayor, does that how I do this, call you Madam Mayor, because I don't know what this is all about, what do we walk into our mind? I just want to clarify, I want to, I want to clarify that that's not the Jamboree's property.
No, it's the city, absolutely, no, but yeah, and ideas that possibly more could develop along that way, I have a lot of commercial property in this town, I think we need more stuff in this town, I think we need entertainment in this town to where we're not going to Albany, we're not going to Eugene to go and do stuff, I think we need it here, the only problem with that is, I have a whole bunch of Main Street buildings that I can't keep rented, so what I would like to do is develop something in town that draws a crowd of people to where we have enough people coming into our town to spend money on entertainment and stuff that we can stay here locally, but it's hard to, to draw those kind of businesses when we don't, like off of Main Street, it's already going to be hard enough to get people to turn off of Highway 20 when they're going over the pass or back, if we, but if we had some sort of event center or something to where the Jamboree could happen, not just once, but maybe four or six times a year, or something like that, then we could also attract other businesses that we could get in here that are bigger businesses that will say, oh, well, this town influxes this many times a year, I will put in a business here, I will do this, and that'll draw some more income, more jobs, everything, and honestly, the key to that whole thing is having some sort of event center or some sort of something, otherwise, it really would not pay to develop a bunch of commercial property going down an area when we have a hard time filling up the commercial that we already have. So I have been thinking about this, obviously, for like four or five years, I've been working on trying to get this mill property, and this has been in my thing, I live in town, I'm going to be in town my whole life, and my whole thing is, I want our town to be somewhere where I don't have to go somewhere else to go do everything I want to do, I don't want my kids to have to leave town to get jobs, I want that to be here, and like, I could do it over a lot longer period, but if I had the approval of something like an improvement district, where I would still be burdened, you know, with the brunt of the, the cost for it, but it would be spread over a longer period of time, and I would be able to do it at historically low, and well, now creeping interest rates, but while they were low, as low as they can, better sooner than later, and I know some of these processes take years with my last experience, the only thing different now is that I'd be the only owner, so there would be nobody that would, you know, they would tell, it should be unanimous as far as that, but the, the thing is, is to just start doing something and getting it, and that would kind of fast-track to that if we start on that kind of plan, and just kind of get that out there, so I only just got it today, so like, I don't like to waste a lot of time, but like, this is, I know it's not going to be like a quick process, that's why I'm throwing it out there, just because I found out that this meeting was tonight, and I was like, well, I just kind of want to throw it out there, make an introduction, kind of tell you guys what my plans are on that, so that way, you guys would kind of be able to, when I come in here with other stuff, you can kind of start preparing or whatever.
We had a little talk today, and his drawing was horrible, but I really am looking forward to seeing your plan from Clark Mill, the road coming across there, and then tying that into the roads that's going to go into the Jamboree, where the Jamboree will be at some point.
Hopefully, yeah.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's a good, well, far as I know, it looks, sounds like a good plan to me, so we just need to get going and, you know, whatever, whatever happens, we'll try to do our best.
Perfect.
Be all four or six Jamborees?
Yes.
Can I ask, what exactly is your ask?
That, for that part was nothing, I just wanted you guys to think about it, so that way, like, it's not a shocker, that way, it's not a shocker when I come up here in another month or two, and it like, you know, I'm, I'll be working with the EPA, obviously, on the other section, so I want to make sure that the road system's going to be all the way off of any contaminated area, so that way, there should be no disturbances on that, but like, obviously, all this is going to have to be done with their cooperation with your guys, and like I said, I just kind of wanted to make that introduction now that I officially got the property and kind of give you guys an idea of what I'm shooting for, so that way, it's not a shocker on that, and then, I don't know if this is the time to go talk about the other thing or not. For the, basically for the FAC management plan, and I wasn't, I wasn't here for all of the meetings, so I don't know a lot of the details on, I only know what I heard basically earlier today at the other meeting, from the county commissioners, about them wanting to get that property to do something or whatever, and for the homeless facility, and I'm not sure exactly what the city's role in that was, or is a, so I know that they allocated funds for homeless or whatever, is that to pay like the FAC to run the facility, or is that for like infrastructure, I wasn't sure.
So, right now, we're having a conversation about what kind of support we would need to do to make this come to realization so that we can have a place for people. There has to be ground support, sewer, water, power, that kind of thing, there has to be some security support, some, you know, cameras, that kind of thing, and from your perspective, from your property, it would be, have the slats in the fence and look like any other industrial site, from maybe some greenery going on there, but right now, we don't have property agreement with the city and FAC, which in the long run, probably isn't in our best interest.
And that's why, that's the other reason I was coming here.
Yes.
So I'm not sure exactly of all of the details with the FAC and how that is necessarily ran, but is it my understanding that there's seven acres there and they're looking at giving two acres for that?
Yes.
So I had a proposal I was going to throw out there of purchasing the seven acres from the county with donating the two acres or, and doing all of the improvements for the facilities essentially, for like, if we donated all the materials for this, the high school necessarily to build, you know, one bedroom or little, you know, rooms or whatever, I'd buy the materials or whatever, put in the infrastructure for it, I'd get the property in between basically that and that, that way I could put in maybe some transitional
So let's talk later, right now, right now, we have a situation with the county is wanting to put in a dump station for motorhomes, which actually with the other end of that property, which is really a good plan, we really need that.
I just don't know if the location off of that street would be good, and necessarily, and I was thinking if you had, which is going to be needed in the city right now, if we're talking about a homeless place, we're gonna, pretty soon, we're going to be needing transitional housing.
I agree.
Prices of housing are going up, and it's not going to be just homeless people that don't have houses, it's going to be families that can't afford the rent or can't afford to do stuff.
But they don't necessarily be, need to be combined, they can.
No, but if you had an insulator in between the homeless area and my property that was transitional, then you wouldn't necessarily see that, and they could all be on basically one property, is the idea. But that's just, I just heard the county basically saying that they would like to see something happen and somebody do something, and I just wonder about like how much funding or whatever, if it's going to be given to a property and they're going to be waiting for grants or something.
Part of the problem, Josh, is they do have the money and they're going to move forward with or without us, and we've had a lot of carrots hung in front of this, this body, and we keep putting it off and putting it off, and we have to hit the ground now, and so we've actually lost a lot of opportunity and time, and so it'd be great to see your plan and what your vision is, I do believe you would be a key player in transitional housing in the future, doesn't have to be on the same site, matter of fact, it may be in our best interest to not have them at the same site, for people to, to progress, right, and, and there's avenues for that to happen.
And I was just wondering on the FAC side of it, though, like, if you're going to deed a property to them, like if, as the city have still control. And I was just wondering on the FAC side of it though, like if you're going to deed a property to them, like if, is the city have still control over that?
No, we don't.
So like if they're not doing the job that it's looked to, to be done, then what is their, what's, what's the recourse?
If we don't sign a contract with them, there is no recourse.
Mayor, Mayor.
Yeah.
So the, the property isn't ours, it's the county's. So you would probably have to go talk to them about purchasing it if.
No, I was just talking to the county and I just was at their meeting where they said they would just love to see, give it to somebody that's going to do something with it this morning at that meeting.
And then the policy board would probably love to have you sit on the policy board to make sure that they're following procedure and protocol and doing what they're saying.
And I was just like, when I heard that.
They're going to do if you're the neighbor of that property.
Yeah, that's one, that's when I heard that they're talking about deeding it to it. It seems like it'd be in better interest of the city to have that property and lease it to them or do something to where they actually had control of it. If that wasn't done the way that it was, they wanted it, the lease would expire and you can try it with another company or do something else. But if you deed that property to them and they are not at it, then you guys, I don't know what recourse there's going to be. And I was just, as a neighbor of that property, that actually directly affects me. So I just don't want anybody to make any rash decisions without.
That was the last meeting.
That was our last meeting.
Madam Mayor, I, I, I think that a lot of these questions will be answered at that, in that other point in the meeting. So I think we should postpone this discussion until later in the meeting.
Well, and I think, I think if you give your ideas and share your ideas with Blair in terms of, you know, we, the city wants to work cooperatively with you. So I appreciate you coming up.
But like I said, I just, yeah, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there because there's some concerns about that, that if there was a, and I, I want to see the problem solved.
Okay.
And I have the funds to try to help solve that problem. So I don't want it to be like dependent on okay, whether.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on. To new business. A request for council action, appointment of ma- mayor, manager pro tem, mayor pro tem, I mean, manager pro tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Before you start, before you start on this, uh, an updated, Julie gave me an update. Since the mayor's not here, instead of mayor in there, it says president pro tem and all those places. So that's what will be signed.
Okay.
So, uh, as, as you are aware, Ray is out of the office for personal reasons. And because of that, we find ourselves in need of signing authority and basically just being able to continue with the, the basic operations. And so, uh, under our charter, the, when the manager is absent, the council directs, the council shall appoint a manager pro tem. You cannot appoint one for longer than six months. You can certainly appoint one for less than that period of time. Um, and you may not appoint, uh, a single, a, a, a single person into, to multiple, uh, terms as, as manager pro tem. If you have somebody serve six months, they can't immediately then serve another six months. Uh, that's what the charter says. Uh, in the past, when, uh, when Ray was, uh, out of the country, we, uh, I was appointed, that was in the fall of 2020. That expired, uh, six months after that, uh, that resolution was done. And so, and it's been more than six months since that point where it expired. And so staff is asking for essentially, uh, the same thing again. We need to have a, a manager pro tem, uh, appointed. And this is the, uh, essentially we just took the same one that we did before and, and, uh, updated it for the current situation. So if you have any questions or are there any modifications you would like to make, uh, now is the, the time to discuss that.
So I would like a council directive, please, and then we will have discussion after the motion.
Um, can I make a motion to approve resolution, what number is this?
Four.
Four, sorry.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Now discussion.
I would be in favor of doing this if we, if it was subject to review in two months.
Two months, two months. Discussion on the amendment.
I'm good with that.
Well, I, I'm, I gotta write down what it's, so it's, so if, if we need to do that in two months, couldn't we bring that up without adding it to this particular, uh, resolution? Is that something?
So as a resolution, you, you certainly have the authority to, um, to later amend resolutions or, uh, what's the word? Um, reconsider them or revoke them, uh, as you please. So whatever resolution you pass tonight, you can direct staff to, uh, bring you a, a, a modified one in the future or however. If you would like us to set it up, an alarm for, uh, you know, bringing this up at, at a certain time, that's, that's certainly, uh, an option as well. Or if you want to include it in the text of the resolution, that it expires at a certain time, that's also, uh, within your rights.
Counsel, we'll be okay with you to just let that go off of this or we can, we can do what you're asking. I don't necessarily have a problem with that either, but it doesn't seem like we need to necessarily.
I, I don't know that.
It's okay with me if we, if we go that route.
I don't know that there's much difference between, um, revisit, having this come before us again in two months or memorializing the fact that in two months, this council has to authorize, authorize. Excuse me, my tongue and mouth are not working, reauthorize a continuation, right? There's really not much difference, it's still going to require council action.
The only suggestion I'd have is make it, if you're going to put a date on this, make it a council meeting at the other end, so you don't have a gap.
So what would a council meeting date be two months from now?
April 12th will be your first council meeting. Uh, that would fall just over two months, basically.
That should be sufficient.
Yes.
Do you, so do you want that in the, the text of the resolution or do you just want it to be on the agenda for that time?
It should be in the text of the resolution.
Do we need a motion on that?
At this point, there's been a motion and a second, and so that motion and second would need to be either voted on or amended to include that modification.
If we wish to amend it. So Council Gorley, is that what you're doing is amending the motion?
Yes.
Well, I.
It would be.
It, wouldn't it be the person who made the motion that would be the amendment?
Okay, sorry. So what do I just say?
Just I amend my motion to.
I amend my motion to, what is it, two months or put the text into?
To be, to expire essentially on the.
Thank you.
April 12th.
Thank you. You're brave. Do we, do we need a second to that?
So, yeah, there would need to be.
Seconds to hold.
Oh, sure, I'll second that.
Okay, so if, if I get this correct now, it's been moved and seconded that we amend the resolution, right? To include a period of two months.
To, to essentially expire on April 12th, is what you were saying.
Expire on April 12th.
So it would, something like this, down, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon passage by city council and signature of the city pro tem and shall expire April 12th, 2022.
So Madam Mayor, if I may, do we have time for discussion?
Yes.
You were saying that we weren't able to appoint somebody for six months and then, um, make it last another six months. So if we cut it short at two months, then would we be able to do another one again?
My understanding of the charter is that you could still, if you chose at that April 12th meeting, you could still then pass another resolution for another four months.
I'd have to look.
For the same person.
Like consecutively.
Yeah, to, the, in the six month term consecutively.
Well, that's probably what they're talking about since you mentioned the six month.
That's what I was wondering if that would be cutting off the appointment prematurely and not able to reappoint without further.
Point of information, so the language in the, in the charter reads, no manager pro tem shall hold his or her position for more than six months, period. No appointment of a manager pro tem shall be consecutively renewed. So if, if you make this action today and have it expire on April 12th, as it currently reads, Blair couldn't be reappointed as manager pro tem.
We could make it subject to review on April 12th, 11th, right?
Uh.
Subject to review. Um, but I honestly, um, unless we have some kind of executive meeting and we do this, I'm not writing a blank check tonight for, uh, six months and I'm just not doing that.
But in point of information, there's, there's no actual check being written.
I know. Metaphorically, okay.
If I may. So instead of saying that we would terminate this within the two month timeframe, just in case any sort of another emergency arises, we could say review to keep us safe for what if situation, worst case scenario, I don't know.
I, I, I think certainly you could, you could have it not say expire, but.
To be reviewed.
Council review.
To be reviewed.
Yeah.
April 12th.
Cause it should be council review. We could do that anyway.
You, you can do that without it being in the text of the resolution, but I don't know, Robert, do you have any ideas on how they would?
I, I think, I think the last suggestion is, is what everybody's getting to is that basically instead of expire, um, and the council shall, and the council shall review, uh, this, the appointment on April 12th, 2022. So it doesn't expire, it just is reviewed.
I'm just nervous that worst case scenario, we terminate this and we still need your help, even though I don't know, so.
I'm not planning on going anywhere, but.
Under the charter, we, we would not be able to, I don't think, if we terminated it prematurely.
So you could, you could just have it, instead of having an actual, instead of adding an expiration date like that, you could just say to be reviewed, uh, on April 12th.
That would be acceptable.
To be reviewed by the council.
Dylan, is that acceptable?
Yep.
So do we reamend them?
Would you have to reamend it again?
So you could just say, I amend my motion as.
I amend my motion.
As stated.
Okay.
Good job.
You know, I don't know, I think.
So if we put this in the resolution, would it, there be down in the last, the paragraph that says now therefore be resolved? Would it go at the end of that?
Okay.
So, Robert, I, I guess what they're saying is, uh, the text, it says, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon passage by the city council and signature of the mayor. And then you could have it say, have it say comma, subject to review at the April 12th, 2022.
Subject to review, okay.
And if that, that's the amendment we, we would make if that's what, uh, Council Richards has in his motion.
Yes.
Okay. So you'll, yeah, so you're voting first on this amendment to the motion and then you would have to vote on the motion itself.
Okay. All right. So all those in favor of the amendment.
I think we need a, a second on that.
Don't we have a motion?
All right.
Second and third.
Yeah, second and third, okay. It's moved to the seconded that we amend the motion to add review on April 12th. So all of those in favor of the amendment to the resolution, Julie, roll call please.
Counsel Trask.
Yes.
Counsel Gorley.
Yes.
Counsel Coleman.
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez.
Yes.
Counsel Richards.
Aye.
Mayor Gerson.
Yes. Okay. And now I, now, now I need a motion to approve resolution number four for 2022.
The motion is already on the table. It was, this is, this is the motion and second that we did first. So now there needs to be a vote on that.
Julie, roll call please. Do I need to read the resolution? Thank you.
Should she read that by title?
Uh, no, it's not an ordinance.
It's not an ordinance, but resolution number four for 2022, a resolution to appoint a manager of pro tem as amended.
Counsel Richards.
Aye.
Counsel Sanchez.
Yes.
Counsel Coleman.
Yes.
Counsel Gorley.
Yes.
Counsel Trask.
Yes.
Mayor Gerson.
Yes. Let the record show that we have six ayes and one absent, uh, to approve resolution number four for 2022.
Madam Mayor pro tem, do we need to practice that more often because they obviously were a little rusty?
That way, doesn't it, but maybe it's just me, not, not the protests, I don't know. Okay, uh, annual adoption of investment policy. Brandon?
Uh, so what you have before you is our original, uh, investment policy that we adopted in, uh, the middle of 2018. Um, there have been some recommended changes as recommended by our investment advisors. Um, and I will again, uh, kind of kick this over to, to Garrett and Whitney, um, to go through any of those changes and, and answer any questions you might have.
Excellent, well, thank you, Brandon. Uh, this is Garrett Cudahy at GPA again. Uh, I just want to highlight that on net, these are cleanup items that aren't materially changing either the risk profile or the investment outcomes or objectives at all for the city. It's really just to align you to statute, uh, with the only real change being that municipal debt, we are increasing the maximum holdings. There's actually no statutory limit on that. Um, and the real reason of that is we now have taxable issuance after the 2018 Tax Cut and Job Act, uh, that made that possible for advanced refunding. So there's actually a market now where before it was all tax exempt and non-economical for the city. Um, but otherwise, uh, the rest is pretty, pretty minor, but happy to stand for any questions if there are any.
Council, other questions? I need a motion, please.
So move, please recommend it.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the investment policy, is there any discussion? Roll call please, Julie.
Counsel Coleman.
Yes.
Counsel Gorley.
Yes.
Counsel Trask.
Yes.
Mayor Gerson.
Yes.
Counsel Richards.
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez.
Yes.
Let the record show, please, we have six ayes and one absent. Thank you, Brandon. Thank you to the consultants too. Okay, moving on. Old business. Well, this, this piece of old business, I think is, we need some discussion on at this point because it may not be valid, so.
So, uh, yes, and I, uh, apologize for the confusion on this. By the time, this has been a constantly moving target. Um, and so the, the latest developments have been in, since Friday essentially. So, um, first off, uh, this item, the lease agreement for a facility on the Public Works property, uh, the council, at last week's meeting, the council directed us to prepare this. FAC, uh, has made it clear that they are, do not want to be on the Public Works yard, uh, property and that they do not want to be a, to have a temporary facility. They want to have a permanent, uh, site. Since then, um, Council, or Commissioner Tucker, uh, sent out an email last Friday suggesting that since the city was hesitant to take on the, a portion of the, the, the county owned property that we call the, the knife shaped property, um, he suggested giving that, uh, giving that portion directly to FAC. And that way the city would not, uh, have any, have the liability of owning a, any property that DEQ might require work on later. Um, it would be FAC owning, uh, that property. Uh, this, that very easily can be a, a win-win. Uh, and at FAC's board meeting yesterday, they indicated a, a desire to take the property from the county if the county is able to donate it. Uh, from my, my understanding of what I've read, I was not present at the county commission meeting this morning. And, but my understanding is that they had some discussion on it and ultimately said that they are willing to donate the property to FAC, uh, provided the city is okay with that. And provided that the city and FAC bring a, a plan to them of, of how it would work out. So it, it seems to me that the county wants to make sure that there's an agreement between the city and FAC, uh, for this to happen. Um, because they, they don't want to step on our toes when it comes to property that's within the city, um, and don't. Because they, they don't want to step on our toes when it comes to property that's within the city and don't want to get in the way of our plans. So, that's kind of in a nutshell what we're dealing with here. This, the staff's recommendation is that you do not approve the lease agreement since the other party isn't interested. But at this time, we kind of need some direction when it comes to these latest developments so that we can make sure this project gets moving forward. So a couple of things to think about and that I'd kind of like to hear your thoughts on. The agreement that we, that you had previously approved with FAC was written with the intent that it be paired with a lease agreement for city owned property. Since there's no lease agreement with it, it makes portions of that agreement kind of not work very well in that in the agreement, they can back out at any time. And before that was fine because if they backed out, then obviously there was no, there was no homeless site, no homeless facility operating. In this case, if it's their property and FAC decides to back out of the agreement, they still have, they would still have the property. Depending on, of course, on how the county donates it to them and, and what conditions there are there. So it still needs to be, that agreement would need to be modified. And my conversation with FAC yesterday was that there seemed to be interest in continuing to be a partner with the city and, and provide these services. And so I think they recognize the need to change that agreement as well. But when it comes to the nuts and bolts of exactly how that agreement would be changed, we don't have anything yet because we just haven't had time to, to get anything together. So it would be good for staff to have some direction from you on how you think that agreement should be changed, how, how you might want to see it changed. But also are, is, are you still willing to donate the annex, the old city hall annex building? Are you still willing to, previously, we talked about contributing to infrastructure improvements to get the site in place. And then we'd also talked about the security for the site, nighttime security. Are those things still of interest to you, given that this would be a FAC owned site and not a city owned site? And then there's, there's more, but I don't want to burden you with too many questions all at once.
So counsel, your discussion?
Madam Mayor, if I may. We just heard from the new mill property owner saying that he was interested in talking to the county about potentially purchasing that land and partnering with FAC as well. So I believe we're spinning our wheels and wasting time trying to make an agreement until we know how that shakes out. And it could probably be put on hold because we might have to come back and change it again, I, I don't really know.
So i- if I may speak to that, part of this is that the, the other half of the property that the county would be retaining, the county wants to put their RV dump station there. The reason they want one of the, want a station like that is because county has a number of parks that have RV camping spaces and right now they have septic systems that they're taking waste from RVs into, into those septic systems and they're, those systems are failing and they're not, it's, it's not a sustainable operation for them. And so what they're trying to do is move that out of those parks, but still have a site nearby where people with RVs can go and dump their, their waste and then go back and enjoy the, the parks. And so that's, that's the reason they want that facility, they've been looking for a facility for some time for a, a place to put that. And they've been working with the city to, to try to make that happen. That's, that's the, their preferred site for that operation to happen, they have a plan in place and they want to get moving. And on that operation, so my guess, and I can't speak for them, of course, but my guess is that the county commissioners would be resistant to the idea of selling the property to someone else because of those, the state of those plants. Now, of course, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but, but that's my understanding.
So then do you think that we should speak with them directly before we make any movement on this to see where they're at? Because according to Mr. Victor, he said that he heard that they were willing to give that to him and I'm not sure if that's what they said or not either, so essentially we'd be doing more work possibly that really doesn't need to be done until we get more information.
So there's a number of things that need to happen and it's unclear to me exactly what the county wants when it comes to a plan and, and what, what would, what they need from us to make this happen. I wasn't able to get ahold of, of the commissioners this afternoon. But my recommendation for moving forward to, to have as much flexibility as we can to move forward would be if the council can indicate their, first of all, consent that, or indicate their consent to the county that you're okay with FAC taking on the property. Or if you also want to say that you're also okay with a private party taking it on. I just need something that I can show the county and indicate, yes, we are happy to partner with FAC, we are happy to see this move forward in whichever scenario you all are okay with.
Then I, I.
I just want to say one thing.
Go ahead.
The word, I, I, this is getting real technical, but the word partner is not what we're going to be.
No.
Okay. Legal.
If, if I may, I, Counsel Sanchez, I did not, I did not hear that at that meeting about giving that property to Josh, that part of the property, I, I never read that, they're, they're pretty sound on putting that down there. And that's, that's going to be that property that they're going to use to do, I don't know how many acres that's going to take. It might take two acres, I don't know what it's going to take. But that's on them and I think they're pretty sound on that, on that, so I don't know that they will back out of that and give him the property, I don't know, or he could buy the property, I don't know. But in my opinion, we need, we need to, we need to get going and, and get this thing out for, for FAC to start. And, and get going here and it's going to take a little more time than I'm, I'm sure I expect. But I also am concerned about if we have any, well, how do I say this? Zoning and all those things that we're going to have to take, we're going to have to have some stuff to do in there and, and possibly what else are we going to be responsible for? And what's the cost? And that's going to be an interesting thing. You know, are we going to put the water in and the sewer, I don't know the answer to that, you know? And, and the power, that's going to be PP and L. So we don't have any idea, now we can put the, I understand, we can put the pipe in. And this is, this is a lot of stuff to go on and those guys want to get going and I don't blame them. I don't blame them. You know, and so I'd like to, I'd like to get this going as, as fast as we can and have the right things to do. You know, so we don't goof something up and.
So we do need to keep a couple of things on point. We've had a lot of distractions as we've gone down this road. We've been talking about this piece of property for this purpose for quite a while. And we have a community partner that would run it, we are not in the homeless business, but they would run it standing and waiting and putting up with our meetings over and over again. And they're going to do something whether we are part of it or not. And the longer we wait, the less ability we have to clean up our downtown and to move forward with other projects that we'd like to see done that are going to make a huge difference, but this needs to happen. And FAC isn't going to stay at the table and entertain any say we have if we're not bringing our A game to the table. If you put this down the road to, into somebody else's hands, it will only be as good as that person's hands and it has to go back out to be bid again to make that happen where it doesn't have to go out back to bid, just like the other piece of property. If it is given to FAC for this purpose. We've already kind of missed the boat because we put this off. And we're just digging a deeper hole for ourselves. So what we do need to do is commit to being, we do need to commit to help get this going. Whether it is in some security at night, so people aren't screaming and carrying on, that it's a safe place, we've got some lights and stuff going on, our cameras going on and that we do put the structure into the ground to help make this happen. Originally, the conversation was that the county might help part of that because of the facility they're wanting to put in. But the farther we kick this can down the road, the less support that we're having in that venue, right? So some of these other things we can hammer out later, but to start with, we need to have a contract with these people because they're going to quit waiting for us. And we just, I don't want to sound mean or anything because I, I mean, everybody's heart's good, we want to do the right thing. But right now it's costing us and we're losing control of something that's going to happen with or without us. And I suggest because we have such a big interest in this that it is with us.
Your microphone. Microphone.
The, the thing that I think the commissioners wanted, they wanted to know if we're okay, the council, are we okay with giving the property to FAC? That's all they wanted to, to get today, I'm pretty sure that's, you can call Commissioner Tucker if you want. He wants everything in writing now and that's fine too. But all they were asking that I heard was whether we are okay with them having the property. And that's what they want to move ahead on. And so I, I think that that's pretty a no brainer to me, but then we've got all those issues, how much are we going to have to pay and how much are we going to do? And those, those things will have to come up and we'll talk to the, their board about it and things, I guess.
Yeah.
So, but that's what they wanted us to tell them. Are we okay with them giving that property? And, and I think that's a no brainer.
That was my understanding too.
Yes.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I, I'm pleased with the fact that the county is choosing to try and take some opportunity here and work together on this issue, I think working together with the county and with FAC is a good move for the city of Sweet Home. I'm okay with the county giving them property and I do believe we can work out the details of the agreement later and how that will be managed well within our city and I think we can move forward even today.
I'm okay, sorry. But I would like to hear more from the victors on their homeless plan first.
So one, one thing to keep in mind is that your consensus or your, i- i- if you choose to, to, to vote to tell the council, to, to tell the county that you are okay with FAC owning the property, that really doesn't mean that they have to give it to them. So it just, it just basically indicates our agreement with it. So if they choose to sell the property to another party, that's perfectly within the county's rights. And, and so tonight, what would be most helpful for, from a staff perspective is indicate by a vote what you want me to tell the county. And then give some direction on what you'd be willing to, to accept when it comes to an agreement with FAC.
So, so Blair, do you want a vote, a motion, or do you want, I'm sorry, or do you want a consensus?
I would appreciate a, a motion and a vote because it, it has more weight with the county.
I move, I move that we enter an agreement with FAC in running the facility down here and support the idea of the county providing the, the property to the FAC.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded that. That we work with an agreement with FAC and we tell the county that we are in favor of them having the property for the, the resource center.
So is there a discussion, Madam Mayor?
There is discussion.
So were they also asking what were we going to do if they in fact did offer that land to FAC? Were you asking what we would put in this agreement to facilitate that in the form of skin in the game or is that another ask?
I, I don't have that much information on what the county wants. There was an email that one of the commissioners sent that basically talked about some of the things that need to be ironed out. Kind of a who, who pays for what discussion needs to happen. But it was not clear that that was necessary to get the ball moving for the property. That's something I need to talk with them more and explore. My thought is that because of how long it takes to get property, the transition of property, we need to see what we can do to give them enough to get the ball rolling and then work out those details as well.
So my understanding is how can we move forward in an agreement when it's not our property to move forward in an agreement with and the county is going to take that on potentially? So again, are we doing this premature to where we have to do it again and again because we have missing information or?
We would actually be done with this if it had been brought to us in the right format in the first place. We would have been, we would have had this agreement done weeks ago if it had been separated out and brought us to us individually.
So this motion that was just made was to pursue an agreement with FAC. We still would need to actually bring that agreement before you because we haven't talked about any text or anything, we had an agreement before that was approved. But we don't even, we haven't even worked out any modifications to that agreement. So it's going to come before you again for the actual agreement. This just directs that staff is to go back and work on it and that you're indicating that the, that you're okay with the county transitioning the property to FAC.
I think it would be important for us to make sure that the FAC understands that we're going to have some sort of agreement with them on, on whatever.
Right, and the areas.
That they can live with and we can live with.
So the areas that, that still are, that would still require some cooperation between those two parties, between the city and FAC are the issues of the city hall annex building, getting, getting, having that given to them. That's currently surplus city property. And so that would need to be part of the agreement. There's also the issue of nighttime security at the site. Before it was talked about the city taking that on. If the city is still taking that on, that does require an agreement with FAC. And then finally, there's the various infrastructure and site improvements that are necessary on the site. A portion of this would require, this plan would require an easement across the public works yard. And so there would be a shared driveway that would serve both the FAC facility as well as the county's RV dump site. And so that, that road would need to be constructed, the water and the sewer lines would be, need to be extended. And we would, we need power along there as well. So those are all areas where the city would have some cooperation with FAC and some frankly leverage, you know, things that, that are, that we're putting in and they would, it would be reason for us to require things of them as well.
Well, Commissioner, oh, I don't want to, Commissioner Tucker thought about us doing the gravel part of the road and they'll black top it.
Yeah.
So that, that's something that, you know, that, that'll have to be brought up, but I, I just think that we need to get beyond their part. And then we can hopefully get a deal with them, whatever we need to, to, to get together and it seems, it seems easy, but I know it's not going to be. So anyway, that's where I'm at, I, I'd like to see that part get going. And, and that'll, that'll be a big step.
And we'll have to negotiate the rest, but until we make a commitment to this, the other partners, the county and FAC, haven't seen us bring anything to, really to the table, that a commitment, this is what we're doing. And so then they can come and bring it back to us with better plan.
And that's all they ask for. That's all they ask for, are you guys okay with giving them the property? That's all they ask.
Chief Lynn?
I would just interject, not really throwing a wrench in everything, but I want everybody to understand as I view it, if we do not control the property, we do not control necessarily what is going to take place on that property. And now I, I, I have the utmost respect for FAC and they've worked with us for longer than we ever anticipated and they're, they've been fantastic. But I think if we do not control the property, in the end, we can't control what happens on that property. And that is a huge concern to me.
I agree, but I think that ship sailed in our last meeting when there was no commitment because of the layer, layer of gravel and all of this. And so it's brought us to this point because we are failing in our partnership with FAC. At this point, we've completely failed and it should have, that should have been addressed in the last meeting. So now that the county is wanting to move it to FAC, I believe that if this company failed in 20 years and we wanted to bring it into the public works, we could have had a parking lot or whatever. But again, we blew it. We as a council failed and we need to pick up the slack and move forward and this is why we got left.
So I appreciate the additional information that you've given. I'm not opposed to being a partner with FAC, I'm just opposed to making an agreement where we don't know if we actually. I'm just opposed to making an agreement where we don't know if we actually have the land to make an agreement with. So it seems kind of premature, but if we are going to offer security and possibly road building and other, um, infrastructure to partner with them. And the county has heard our cries from the last meeting, say, we're nervous about liability. So they stepped up to, um, directly gift that to FAC when we've been wondering where the county has been, then I would be for that, too.
Any further discussion? Julie, is this what I hear from the public on this before we make a vote? So Lila, would you like to come up and talk about this?
Well, that's what I wanted to, I was just going to tell you that the councilwoman from the Wawaala.
Excuse me. You gotta be on the microphone, I'm sorry.
I'm not loud enough, that's surprising, okay. The councilwoman from the Wawaala ward that has the sleep center in it, she praised the vote last week that moved it away from the neighborhood. She said she actually looked online and looked at our neighborhood in relationship to the proposed site. And she, she commended the move. Okay, I just wanted to say that. And I like what you guys are saying. Okay, breathe deep. Um, I think if we do contribute to the infrastructure, that will also give us part of the partnership and they might be more respectful of the things we expect from them in return. Like if we say, hey, you know, you guys are getting loud at night, you know? I think they'd respect our desires to work on that problem or whatever the problem might be. If we do have that partnership with them, with the infrastructure, the security at night, especially if that is our security at night, maybe just for the first couple of years or something to get it going. But that's just my saying, I, I like the idea of them having the property themselves.
Thank you. Okay. I believe, is somebody going to call for the motion?
There, there is a motion on the table, I believe.
There is a motion.
One second.
Julie, do you need to repeat the motion or do we know what it, do we remember what it is?
I, I believe the motion was to, uh, continue with, uh, making an agreement with FAC and to indicate to the county that we were okay with them, uh, donating the property to FAC.
Yes.
And I think it's really important that we get it to them as soon as we can to the county.
Roll call, Julie.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
No.
And Mayor Gerson?
Yes. So let the record show, we have five eyes and one nay.
Madam Mayor, before we move on from that subject, um, I, as we move to pursue, uh, you know, fleshing out the agreement with the, with FAC and talking to the county about who's paying for what, um, I, it would be helpful to have a bit more, a bit of direction on which of the items we've talked about, are you still okay with? Uh, first off, are you still good with, just by consensus, is the council still good with, uh, contributing the city hall annex building to FAC to this site?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Angela, you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, for me, so that's six of us.
Okay. And then, um, second, eh, when it comes to, uh, are the city's contribution toward any infrastructure improvements? I'd just like to hear what your thoughts are on that and to help us move forward with, talk with FAC and the county. Part of this, as, as, uh, Counselor Trask mentioned, the, uh, the county's plans require the extension of a, of essentially a driveway, a shared driveway through city property. That would be the location where the water and sewer lines are run as well. He suggested, and this was only Council, Commissioner Tucker suggested that if the city, um, developed the, the road base, so the gravel layer at the, uh, to, on that road, that the county would then come in and, um, and do the paving of the whole thing. Uh, that was the city doing the, the gravel layer up to the property line with, where, where the property line will be for the RV site. Um, I think that I, I need to look at the costs involved in that, um, but it, it could be a, a good situation for us. But just to get an idea of what level of, of contribution do you find acceptable, uh, for a situation like this?
Well, I would like to speak to this issue. I think I've mentioned before and I am very serious about this, is I think only marijuana, the marijuana tax money should be spent on this project. There should be no other tax money spent on this project. I think the community would buy into this a bit better if they felt like their property taxes weren't being used to, to, uh, develop this. And only if you're a marijuana user are you paying the taxes on that. So I'm not sure where we are on that, Brendan, but I, I feel very strongly about any monies that we put into this facility should come from that fund.
Madam Mayor, pro temp, but currently, right now, we're spending over a hundred thousand dollars on cleaning up after homeless people in town beyond any kind of marijuana money. And it's going to cost us to put in pipes in the ground. And so a lot of that will be done in-house, so it's going to save a lot of money. But I don't want to put any restrictions on this when it's currently costing us more than that. And so we did make an allocation for this year, but at the time, our city manager told us that the state is dipping into some of that money, so in the future, we may not get as much. So that's something we actually can lobby for is for when you're investing in money like this, that maybe we can be kept whole or cities like us be kept whole for that allocation rather than our tax dollars from marijuana money being used. We need to work on that end of it, but to get this kicked off, it may cost us a little bit more than we'd like to start with. So I don't want to put any, I don't want to hamstring anybody on this. Is that understandable? I'm sorry, is.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it's costing us a lot more than that right now.
Yeah, I understand that.
Which is tax dollars.
I understand that.
Thank you.
And I'm not happy with spending tax dollars that way either.
I agree. But I think, I think in the long run, we will all benefit enough to make up for that investment.
So Brendan, do you have that figure?
So right now, we, we budgeted, you as a council decided to budget fifty thousand dollars of the available marijuana monies, um, for assisting with, with homeless in the city of Sweet Home. That could be used for this project, that could be, right now, it's being used to, to provide some services at, at Old City Hall. Um, but basically fifty thousand dollars to cover homeless issues in the city.
But the total one hundred thousand, the total amount was allocated by this council.
It was only fifty thousand that was allocated initially.
Go back and read the minutes, go listen to the minutes. It was because, uh, Ray said, it is unprecedented that we do that. The entire money was set aside, but fifty thousand dollars was upfront to be used as we needed without coming back to the council. The rest of it is set aside for us, but would have to come back to the council before we spend it.
So when that budget was developed, when it went through, when it went through the adoption process in June, when the council adopted it, the marijuana money, first off, goes into the general fund. Um, it, we budgeted a hundred ten thousand. Um, I can tell you today that we will not make a hundred ten thousand in marijuana money, primarily due to the state's kind of reallocation of, of revenue sharing of marijuana funds. Um, but we will fall about thirty thousand dollars short of our, of our estimated budget. When we set that budget, um, what we did is added fifty thousand dollars and basically took it right off the bottom of, of the, um, unappropriated ending fund balance for the general fund. We're using marijuana money, but it's all in the general fund. It's all, it's accounting. Um, and so what I can tell you is, one, we can't make any adjustments because we're not going to make enough as it is. And two, the rest of that money, everything above the fifty thousand, was allocated to other stuff within the general fund. All of the funds, all of our revenue funds that come in are then allocated across the general fund for the purpose of operating court, community and economic development, parks, uh, various transfers, so on and so forth. And so the marijuana money is a portion of that. Since we don't have anything else to allocate, we're not getting excess revenues. We wouldn't be able to make any adjustments to spend additional beyond that fifty thousand, at least saying we're using the marijuana money. Um, at this point, fifty thousand's what you got. Um, we're, we've used about seven or eight thousand to date. Um, so you're, you're down in the probably forty two thousand dollar range left, um, whatever, whatever is necessary.
So at the, um, end of this fiscal budget, what kind of carryover are we going to have? Because if the money's co-mingled and the commitment was made, I'd like to know how much is left at the end of that cycle.
It's, it is, it's not tracked separately because it's in the general fund. Um, if it was a council desire as part of this next budget process, it certainly is something that could be allocated out into a different fund. It's not a recommendation I would make, but it's not my call overall. The reason I say I wouldn't make that, um, recommendation is the city has a lot of funds, as it is, twenty seven, uh, to be precise. And that's a lot. Um, it's a lot to manage, it's a lot to, for, for the auditors to review. It's more than most cities. And so keeping it in the general fund, one, meets the requirements of our code that says that that funding has to be deposited into the general fund. Um, and also ensures that we can spend it on policing programs. We can send it out to any place. We've got flexibility with those funds. At the end of the year, those marijuana funds, whatever does come in, gets lumped into the unappropriated ending fund balance and becomes part of next year's beginning fund balance, which can be then reallocated to various programs. So for now, it's not specifically tracked. If that's a desire of the council, we can make that happen.
Well, I think it, when we did this during the budget process and we allocated that and then there was some left in the budget, the other fifty or sixty thousand dollars, there was a commitment made and knowing that we all knew it was going to cost us more to get the sewer lines and the water lines and all of that in, to get this the way it needed to be. And FAC was bringing to the table much more than we were. But at the same time, I do feel that when we make a commitment, we need to honor that commitment, even though we know it's going to cost more than initially, um, we would like. And so I think our community does prefer to think of it as those marijuana dollars. And I agree with Counselor Gerson on that, but I, the whole point of this was that I don't want to tie our hands and say, when this dollar amount is done, we're done, because it's literally costing us more than that not to do this. And so.
So I think what we would be able to do then at that point is say that, um, and it, and it, but it depends on receipts and we're going to receive receipts all the way through June. So while I can't give you a to, a complete number today, as far as what will be available, um, we budgeted a hundred ten, we're not going to hit that, I don't believe, um, unless things really change for the rest of the fiscal year. Um, but what we can say is then, uh, if, if we hit what I think we're going to hit, then thirty thousand dollars can come right off the top of the general fund and go towards these programs as part of what's remaining of this year's, uh, marijuana tax revenue. Um, so it's, it, it can still happen, it's just not separately recorded, so to speak. It's all, it's all part of the beginning fund balance at that point.
So thank you, Brendan. So if I may move this along, so let's see if we can have a consensus on the annex. Dylan? Susan?
Yes, yes.
Yes, for me, too. Okay, so you have consensus on the annex. What about a consensus on, um, assisting with, well, with the infrastructure?
Yes.
Yes.
Consensus on that, what's the next point?
Uh, the only other one was that the, the nighttime security.
Oh, the nighttime security?
Well, I, I want to hear more about what that means.
And that would, we'd have to nail out, nail down some, some actual numbers. And, um, and with the, with the, the agreement that we work out, uh, we'll bring that to you.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but is it going to be some of the police people? Or is it going to be somebody that they hire?
I, I, it was going to be hired security, not policemen.
Okay. I think we should defer to the chief and I think you, you had a plan.
No, I was not in that conversation. It was not to involve, uh, the police department, other than just typical, um, drive-throughs and, and kind of monitoring their areas, uh, time allows.
Okay, I thought that it was, um, maybe the hire would be through you and that kind of thing.
That had been somewhat mentioned, but, uh, no details were, had really been provided on that.
All right, thank you.
I'm, I'm okay with that then.
Okay, I think there's some advantage to that for the public works yard, too, in the, in the vicinity. Yes, I'm agreeing with that. So that, so how, any other points?
I think that gives us enough to get moving.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, I'll talk to Dominic tomorrow.
Well, I, I, I need a little bit more information from the county in terms of what they're looking at, at the road and what their contribution to that would be before, for my, for my information.
Especially when you consider that you're going to have people walking along this road. And if you've got a bunch of big RVs heading down it, uh, you really need a sidewalk. You just do. It's not going to be safe to not have one. So there's, there's, there's other things like that that we need to talk about what's actually included in this roadway.
Well, and those, excuse me, they, they, that stuff's going to have to be put in before you put a blacktop down.
True, yes.
That's going to have to be done first.
You can't do curb after the blacktop, you got to do the curb before the blacktop.
Well, I'm talking about the, the, uh, water and the wastewater and the power. It has to be there first.
Yes.
Uh, what about a walking bike path?
Okay, let's not get down the.
Well, we could save some money, is all I was thinking.
Sure, I mean, you wouldn't need a sidewalk on both sides, uh, at all. You, you would just do it on one side. And, and frankly, yeah, you want to make sure there's enough room for the people who are likely use the facility. So, uh, we'll, we'll see what we can do.
Madam Mayor, there is a guest online who is raising their hand to speak. It happens to be Brock, actually. Um, Brock, you can unmute if you'd like.
All right, thank you. Um, I just wanted to add a little clarification. The guard was just basic guard services and I'm, I'm indifferent who hires that guard services. I did get bids and they're usually in the frame of anywhere between twenty two and thirty dollars an hour. As I think Chief Lynn or, or Blair pointed out, there are no details to that really yet because we haven't sought bids. Um, we haven't sought the possibility of donation in kind and some other actions. The idea behind the guard, it was between ten PM and I believe seven AM, but seven or six AM, based on what was in the guidelines and such. And then the last piece that is absolutely critical, I know for the county, is the easement piece. And that just needs to be agreed to.
And, and that's been part of the conversation the entire time. So I, I apologize for not, for failing to ask that question, but I guess, uh, I, if I could get some consensus on whether you're still open to, uh, providing both FAC and, uh, Lynn County with an easement through the public works yard, as we've indicated on previous maps. Um, we, they seem to be anxious about, about that. And so, uh, some, putting their minds at ease would be helpful in this.
And then the last part about drawings, there are drawings out there and it does reflect a sidewalk with the, the paving. And there's, uh, widths and everything. So the team, the engineering team has put all that together and I, I can resend that to you, Blair, if you'd like, but it's out there in our share.
Yeah, that'd be great. I, I, well, I, I'll talk to Joe about it.
I think from the very beginning, when we were talking about anything back there, we were talking about an easement through there and that was just part of the plan.
And the, the easement is kind of necessary for the city, it benefits from the easement as well. Right now, there is a flag, uh, that, that, that whole property is basically a flag lot. So the driveway, um, goes along the, uh, the railroad right of way and connects with Twenty Fourth Avenue. When the rail crossing is built, that driveway will no longer work. Uh, you cannot have a driveway that close to a rail crossing. And so the driveway will need to be relocated at least a hundred feet away from that, that rail crossing. And so the easement, even before this whole discussion, uh, started and Joe and I were working on getting the Twenty Fourth Avenue corridor north across the tracks, the, we, we had the land deal with the, with the folks on the corner, uh, and, and that's, that's been done. And then the city was going to contribute its public right of way, but we were going to have to work with Lynn County on relocating that access. And so this accomplishes that purpose as well. And so from an economic development standpoint, this was a piece of the puzzle. And, uh, I'm certainly, as a staff person, highly recommending that you move forward with the easement.
Do we need a motion for that particular, I think, rather than consensus?
Um, it's, it, it'll be reviewed as part of the final plat, but, uh, yeah, that would be, that would be helpful just to set the county's mind at ease since they, since Commissioner Tucker in particular was anxious about that.
So moved. I'll second it.
So we have a motion on the floor to allow the easement on the road to, to the county. Um, and a second, is there any further discussion? Roll call, please, Julie.
I believe, yeah.
Mayor Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Tross?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Let the record show we have six I's and one absent. Moving along, Blair.
All right, that brings us to the franchise agreement.
Yes, to the franchise agreement.
All right. So in your packets is see, that is page.
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six?
Talking about the six.
Yes, yes. As you are aware or may not be aware, anybody who uses our roadways for their utility lines and the private utility such as Century Link or Comcast or Pacific Power has a franchise agreement with us that governs things like where they're allowed to put their lines, when they can cut into our street, how they need to make repairs, et cetera. Along with that franchise agreement is a franchise fee. In this case, Century Link, we have a proposed extension of the franchise agreement essentially. They typically last ten years. And this one, I think, continues the seven percent franchise fee. And so if you have any questions, we'd be happy to take those.
So, Larry, does that ever is that ever changed? I mean, does it ever go up or does it just stay where it's at?
I believe this is the maximum that's allowable.
Okay.
Right now is is seven percent.
All right.
So do I have a motion?
Second.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve.
I'll first it. How's that?
You had a premonition.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinance bill number two for twenty-twenty-two. Who gets to read it?
We have to do the vote, right?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Tross?
Yes.
Mayor Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Ordinance no. Two for twenty-twenty-two, ordinance no. An ordinance granting a franchise by the city of Sweet Home to Century Tel of Oregon, DBA Century Link, ITS successors and assigns the right to furnish, sell and distribute telecommunications services to the city and to all persons, businesses and industries within the city, and the right TO acquire, construct, install, locate, maintain, operate and extend into, within and through said city all facilities reasonably necessary to furnish, sell and distribute a telephone plant, transmission line or lines and to transmit communications in and to the city of Sweet Home to all persons, businesses and industries within the city and the right to make reasonable use of all streets and other public places as may be necessary and fixing the terms and conditions thereof. The city of Sweet Home does ordained as follows. Article I definitions. For the purpose of this franchise, the following words and phrases shall have a meaning given in this article. When not inconsistent with the context, words used in the present tense include the future tense, words in the plural number include the singular number, and words in the singular number include the plural number. The word shall is mandatory and may is permissive. Words not defined in this article shall be given their common and ordinary meaning. One point one city refers to and is the city of Sweet Home, Lynn County, Oregon, and includes the territory as currently is or may in the future be included within the corporate boundaries of the city of Sweet Home. One point two city council refers to and is the legislative body of the city of Sweet Home. One point three company refers to and is Century Tel of Oregon Incorporated, DBA Century Link and its successors and assigns. One point four communications facilities refer to and are only those facilities reasonably necessary to provide telecommunications services within the city. One point five facilities refer to and are all facilities reasonably necessary to provide telecommunications services into, within and through the city and include plants, works, systems, lines, equipment, underground links, switches, wires and radio links. One point six Public Utility Commission refers to and is the Public Utility Commission of the state of Oregon or other authority succeeding to the regulatory powers of the Public Utility Commission of the state of Oregon. One point seven revenues refer to and are those amounts of money which the company receives from its customers within the city for the sale of exchange access services as authorized by ORS two hundred and twenty-one point five one five and four hundred and three point one zero five from the company under rates, temporary or permanent, authorized by the Public Utility Commission, adjusted for refunds, the net write-off of uncollectible accounts, corrections or other regulatory adjustments. One point eight streets and other public places refer to and are streets, alleys, biaducks, bridges, roads, lanes, easements, public ways and other public places in said city. Article two grant of franchise. Section one, grant of franchise. The city hereby grants to the company for the period specified and subject to the conditions, terms and provisions contained in this ordinance, the right to furnish, sell and distribute any telecommunications or telecommunications-related services to the city and to all persons, businesses and industries within the city, a non-exclusive right to acquire, construct, install, locate, maintain, operate and extend into, within and through the city all facilities reasonably necessary to provide communication facilities to the city and to all persons, businesses and industries within the city, and a non-exclusive right to make reasonable use of all streets and other public places as may be necessary to carry out the terms of this ordinance. Section two, term of franchise. The term of this franchise shall be for ten, ten, years, beginning underscore 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 twenty-twenty-two and expiring underscore 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 twenty thirty-two. Article three franchise fee. Section one, franchise fee. In consideration for the grant of this franchise, the company shall collect and remit to the city a sum equal to seven percent, seven percent of the revenues. Section two, payment schedule. For the franchise fee owed on revenue received after the effective date of this ordinance, payment shall be made in quarterly installments due on or before the last day of the month following the end of each calendar year quarter. Payments at the beginning and end of the term of this ordinance shall be prorated. All payments shall be made to the city manager. The city council or any committee appointed by the city council shall have access to the books of the company for the purpose of auditing or checking to ensure that the franchise fee has been correctly computed and paid. Section three, franchise fee payment in lieu of other fees. Payment of the franchise fee by the company is accepted by the city in lieu of any occupancy tax, license tax, permit charge, inspection fee or similar tax, assessment or excise upon the privilege of doing business or in connection with the physical operation thereof, but does not exempt the company from any lawful taxation upon its real property, sales and use taxes or any other tax not related to the franchise or the. Commented, JF one, Robert said by law seven percent is the most we can ask for. Physical operation thereof or assessment of fees for building permits or land use permits for structures and construction projects located outside of streets and rights of way. Article four, conduct of business. Section one, conduct of business. The company may establish from time to time such rules, regulations, terms and conditions governing the conduct of its business as shall be reasonably necessary to enable the company to exercise its rights and perform its obligations under this franchise, provided however that such rules, regulations, terms and conditions shall not be in conflict with the laws of the state of Oregon or the city of Sweet Home. Section two, tariffs available online. The company shall make available online copies of all its tariffs currently in effect and on file with the Public Utility Commission. Said tariffs shall be available for inspection by the public. Section three, compliance with PUC regulations. The company shall comply with all rules and regulations adopted by the Public Utility Commission. Section four, compliance with company tariffs. The company shall furnish communication facilities within the city to the city and to all persons, businesses and industries within the city at the rates and under the terms and conditions set forth in its tariffs on file with the Public Utility Commission. Section five, applicability of company tariffs. The city and company recognize that the lawful provisions of the company's tariffs on file and in effect with the Public Utility Commission are controlling over any inconsistent provision in this franchise dealing with the same subject matter. Article V, construction, installation and operation of company facilities. Section one, location of facilities. Company facilities shall not interfere with the city's water mains, sewer mains, gas mains or other municipal use of streets and other public places. Company facilities shall be located so as to cause minimum interference with public use of streets and other public places and shall be maintained in good repair and condition. Section two, excavation and construction. All construction, excavation, maintenance and repair work done by the company shall be done in a timely and expeditious manner which minimizes the inconvenience to the public and individuals. All such construction, excavation, maintenance and repair work done by the company shall comply with all applicable codes of the city of Sweet Home, the state of Oregon and the United States of America. All public property whose use conforms to restrictions and easements disturbed by company construction or excavation activities shall be restored as soon as practicable by the company at its expense to as good as or better than its former condition. The company shall comply with the city's requests for reasonable and prompt action to remedy all damage to streets or dedicated easements and city utilities contained therein where the company is performing construction, excavation, maintenance or repair. Work. The city reserves the right to restore property and remedy damages caused by company. Activities at the expense of company in the event the company fails to perform such work within a reasonable time after notice from the city. Section three, relocation of company facilities. If at any time the city requests the company to relocate any distribution line service connection or other facility installed or maintained in streets or other public places in order to permit the city to change street grades, pavements, sewers, water mains or other city works, such relocation shall be made by the company at its expense. The company is not obligated herunder to relocate any facilities at its expense which were installed in private easements obtained by the company, the underlying fee of which was, at some point subsequent to installation, transferred to the city. Following relocation, all property shall be restored to as good as or better than its former condition by the company at its expense. The city will reasonably exhaust alternatives not requiring relocation in all cases. Section four, service to new areas. If during the term of this franchise the boundaries of the city are extended, the company shall extend service to areas not served by any other telephone company in accordance with the company's tariffs and applicable laws. Section five, restoration of service. In the event the company's communication system or any part thereof is partially or wholly destroyed or incapacitated, the company shall use due diligence to restore its system to satisfactory service within the shortest practicable time. Section six, rules and regulations. All lines and equipment constructed under this grant shall be constructed in accordance with established practices as prescribed by applicable REA specifications and drawings and the rules and regulations of the Public Utility Commission of the state of Oregon and its duly or legally constituted successors in authority and the rights and privileges hearing granted in said streets. Alleys and public highways shall be subject at all times to such ordinances and reasonable regulations as are now or shall hereafter be ordained or passed by said city concerning similar uses and excavations in the care of streets, alleys and public highways. Section seven, safety regulations by the city. The city reserves the right to adopt from time to time reasonable regulations in the exercise of its police power which are necessary to ensure the health, safety and welfare of the public, provided that such regulations are not destructive of the rights granted herein and not in violation of any state or federal laws. The company agrees to comply with all such regulations now existing or duly adopted in the construction, maintenance and operation of its facilities and in the provision of telecommunications services within the city. Section eight, inspection, audit and quality control. The city shall have the right to inspect at all reasonable times any portion of the company's system used to serve the city and its residents. The city also shall have the right to inspect and conduct an audit of company records relevant to compliance with any terms of this ordinance at all reasonable times, but no more than once per year. The company agrees to cooperate with the city in conducting the inspection and or audit and to correct any discrepancies affecting the city's interest in a prompt and efficient manner. Each party shall pay its own expenses in connection with any such audit unless a material irregularity is found during such audit, in which case the company shall pay the reasonable cost of such audit. Section nine, maps. The company shall prepare and submit to the city a map showing the location of its distribution system within the city, showing location of all appurtenances incident to the distribution system insofar as such facilities can reasonably be determined. The map shall be revised no more frequently than annually by the addition of the information hereby required as the system is extended or revised. The city agrees that any such map shall not be used by it or disseminated to the public for use in locating underground facilities. Section ten, tree trimming. Subject to the provisions of this ordinance, the company may prune trees when necessary in public right-of-way for the operation of the utility lines, wires or other appurtenances, provided such pruning shall be performed by or supervised by a certified arborist and it shall be done without cost or expense to the city. The company shall provide a written notice to the city public works department and property owner and resident at least ten, ten, business days prior to any pruning to be done on the property. The city recognizes that a ten, ten day notice may not be possible in emergency situations. However, the city does encourage the company to provide as much advance notice to property owners and residents as is reasonably possible under such emergency circumstances. Article six, indemnification of the city. Section one, city held harmless slash insurance. The company shall maintain its structure, apparatus and other equipment as to afford all reasonable protection against injury or damage to persons or property therefrom, and the company shall save the city harmless from all liability or damage and all reasonable expenses necessarily accruing against the city arising out of the exercise by the company of the rights and privileges hereby granted, provided such liability or damage was not caused by the city. Section two, notice to company. The city will provide prompt notice to the company of any claim or action against the city arising out of the exercise by the company of its franchise rights. Section three, payment of expenses. The company shall pay for all expenses relating to the publication of notice and ordinances arising out of the process for obtaining this franchise. Article seven, assignment, saving clause, amendment. Section one, assignment. The company shall not transfer or assign any rights under this franchise to a third party, accepting only corporate reorganizations of the company not including a third party, unless the city shall approve such transfer or assignment in writing. Approval of the transfer or assignment shall not be unreasonably withheld. Section two, saving clause. If any portion of this franchise ordinance is declared illegal or void by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remainder of the ordinance shall survive and not be affected thereby. In such case, the party shall proceed with due diligence to attempt to draft provisions that will achieve the original intent. Section three, amendment. This franchise agreement may be amended by written amendment signed by both parties. Commented, JF two, Rob.
Section four, replacement. Upon the effective date of this ordinance, it shall replace and supersede ordinance number two for two thousand and ten, ordinance number two, one-two-one-six, which was the prior franchise agreement between the parties, passed by the council and approved by the mayor this twenty-third day of February blank twenty-twenty-two, city of Sweet Home, Oregon, by blank, yeah. The one it's up with.
Twenty-third, twenty-third of February, is that what you want to say?
Well, it's blank, actually. It should be blank.
Okay.
So this blank day of blank twenty-twenty-two.
So we had six I's for the first reading. I I neglected to give the result of the vote. Do I have a motion to move it to second reading?
Yeah, just just a moment.
I'm sorry.
Uh, just a minute. I'll just go on. See you, Sweet Home, Oregon, by and blank title, mayor approved, Lumen. That that needs to be changed to Century Century Tel. Tel and doing business as Century Link and then blank blank by General Manor, Oregon, Washington, test, city manager, ex officio city recorder. And there was a reference, I think, if I heard right on on here someplace. I think it was a side note where it said, Robert said, that's not part of the ordinance. It's not written down here. It was a one of those side note things that you have. And when they start out, it's not no, no, but it's number, number abbreviation. So.
Okay, do I have a motion to move it to second reading by title only?
Heavens, yes.
Second.
So it's been moved to the second and that we move ordinance bill whatever to second reading next meeting. All those, oh, roll call, Julie, please.
Mayor Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Tross?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Six I's and no N's and one absent. Okay. Or no second reading of ordinance bills, but we have a third reading of an ordinance bill, which we approved the third reading. Is that correct, Blair? So now we need to vote to approve.
So we conduct the third reading by title only and then you vote to Robert is adopt the proper terminology there?
Sure.
Yeah, you vote to adopt the ordinance.
Okay, so.
Madam Mayor, are we supposed to have the second reading by title only from the other one this meeting?
This is the building amendments one?
No, the one that we just had, the Lumen. We just all unanimous said for the second reading by title. Is that for tonight?
Yeah, it would be at the next meeting. There's no emergency clause with that one. So.
You can you can.
So.
Just so you know, it's fine. What I got was is the last thing up there was is it was going to be read at the next meeting. Okay, so we got that. I'm not trying to bring it up and changing it. But just so you know, the emergency clause doesn't have anything to do with that. The emergency clause cuts out the thirty, if you have emergency clause, it cuts out the thirty day, you should usually, when you pass an ordinance for the third time, it usually sets for thirty days before it comes effective. That's what the emergency clause collapsed with. That the two readings are is in the charter and if everybody agrees, then that's that's a different animal.
Thought it was emergency to get through it tonight.
It is an emergency.
Can we make it an emergency?
So, point of order. So, uh, let's see, we'll need to have the third reading of this bill of the ordinance by title only, please.
Okay.
A vote.
Ordinance bill number one for twenty-twenty-two, ordinance number one-three-zero-one. Sweet Home ordinance amending certain sections of SHMC Chapter fifteen point zero one, Administration and Enforcement Building Code and SHMC Chapter fifteen point zero three, various codes with expediency clause.
I need a motion to.
Adopt.
Adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Is there any discussion? Roll call, Julie, please.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor, or I'm sorry, Mayor Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Tross?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
We have six I's and no N's to approve. Okay, got to that. All right. Reports of committees, I noticed we have solid waste advisory council information. Who is on that council? You have all this information in here?
Oh.
Oh, okay. Well, perhaps it's just information.
I think that's just provided by the EQ to the city.
Okay. Are there any other committee reports? I don't have a mayor's report.
Oh, I guess this is the time when it's usually a city manager's report. Okay. So a couple of things. First, there's a there's a magazine in front of you. This is a a magazine produced by site. a magazine produced by Site, Site Selector Magazine is done an Oregon edition for 2022. Business Oregon has been the driving force behind this. The, this magazine is intended to get in front of decision makers and people who are looking for sites for their businesses. And so, we were, when they, we were contacted last fall, when this was being developed, and every city in Oregon was given the opportunity to purchase ad space. And with the, the desire that the council had to increase our marketing, we decided this would be a good use. And so we produced an ad that you can see there. There's a full page ad on page 12, I guess it is. I don't recall the, the page. That's the full page ad. And then elsewhere, there is a, another third page ad. There you go. So, just for your perusal and your reading pleasure, they sent us a big box of these magazines, so I have them to share with people who are interested in, in placing sites here. But just wanted to make you aware of that and give you a chance to take a look at it.
It's the one where you had the interview with these?
No, there is a different one. That's another thing I was going to bring up. Yesterday morning, I had a, a interview with Oregon Business Magazine, which is not a state agency, it is a private magazine. And they had contacted the city wanting to talk to somebody about real estate, the real estate market in Sweet Home. So I pulled in one of the Realtors in town and we both sat in on this interview. Apparently, they're, they're working on this article and it will be in the March edition of Oregon Business Magazine. They're coming tomorrow to take some pictures and it, it went really well. It was really, it was nice to to have you and it was good to have the attention, frankly. And I think the Carla Hogan was the Realtor that, that sat in with me on it and she did a great job and I think we represented the, the city fairly well and hopefully the pictures will turn out great too, but it was a great opportunity to kind of indicate the, the city's position, the opportunities that we have here and the, the desire we have to be easy to work with and, and promote our community, frankly, what, everything that we want to create here. So it was nice to, to join, to participate in that and hopefully the article is as positive as the experience was so far. It's because of the nature of the magazine, I, it seems to me that it will likely be a positive, positive article. They don't, they don't usually bother printing something if they're just going to talk about how awful you are, so. That's, that was nice. The, let's see. I was going to mention the sale of the mill site. You seem to be aware of that and Mr. Victor was the, was the high bidder there and I've talked with him a little bit about some of his ideas and, and he's asked for, for copies of what the city has, has, you know, some of the, the theoretical plans that we've put out and, and produced in the past and we've shared those with him and we've talked about different things that we've talked about over the years that, among the council and staff to, of things that would work well there. So I will continue, of course, to, to work with him as well, the same as we do with any property owner to, to, that wants to develop their property and help them be aware of, of city requirements, but also opportunities for, for working together to get that to move forward, so. I'm excited to I'm excited that it's in private hands. It was a bumpy road to get to this point and, and I'm praying that he has you know, less difficulties than, than we imagine he might, but we'll see. Finally, the LOC is, has a couple of bills that they are asking for support on regarding local marijuana taxes. Uh, this came up earlier this meeting today, but there is a bill HB 4056 is a bill about the distribution of marijuana tax revenues. Um, and it addresses the, there's a capped amount. Under measure 110, cities and counties split a capped amount of $9 million annually. And that's not indexed. It wouldn't grow with the market or with, or anything. And so that's concerning that it's, that it's stuck at that amount regardless of any changes in the market. And so HB 4056 addresses that. The LOC wanted also to, to have a something that, an amendment to that that would address what they're referring to as a $50 million backfill. Essentially, there's, we're, because of measure 110, we're projected to lose you know, $50 million cities in general throughout Oregon are projected to lose that amount because of the changes to to the marijuana tax. And so the LOC is seeking to have an amendment to that bill that addresses that. The other bill is SB 1506. And that one is intended to address the cap on local marijuana taxes. That we have a 3% cap right now. But with, again, passage of measure 110 and the increase on the state side of things, it really throws the whole allocation out of whack. And, and cities are, essentially the LOC is saying that cities are getting a pretty raw deal here. So, wanted to wanted to bring that up and let you know about that. I, I think these are items that are worth the city, you know, making our voice heard on what we, what we wish on these, so. Something for us to look into and to support in the legislature. I think that's the only other thing is there was a council training scheduled for February 18th, 19th and 20th. And that needs to be, I've talked with the mayor about that. We need to postpone that. And we'll have to reschedule another time to do goal setting and such, so. Well, now we don't have to excuse your absence, so.
Are there any questions?
Well, I just, I have a comment, maybe that's for the end, but I guess a wonderful legislature is going to have a 3% in, not income tax, but a sales tax for us, which we voted down for nine times. And that's going to go through, I guarantee it. 100%. The legislature is going to put it through and we're not going to have any say. That's what I heard yesterday.
Madam Mayor, I, I think it died today, so.
Oh, good.
If I may, were you requesting the city councilors to testify against those bills in support or opposition, or was the city going to come out with a position on that as the city, or what is your ask?
So I, I was making you aware of what the LOC has asked for and, and our, my recommendation would be to support the LOC's efforts. If you wish staff to, to do anything to support those, we await your direction. If you yourselves want to contact the LOC, you're certainly welcome to, of course, but it's, it is, it would be best if that came from the, the united council.
I think you probably need to find when they have the public hearing and submit something on our behalf if that's.
Well, we, we can go through our legislature, legislators for, for that and, and reach out to them, but first and foremost, it's, it's, staff would need direction from the council that you, that's something you want us to support.
I think because of the financial constraints that are looming ahead and what the legislators have been trying to do, that we should at least try to carve out for cities to be kept whole on their revenues from marijuana money that are doing projects like we're doing. That try to uplift and protect our people with homeless issues or housing issues and mental health and those things. And cities who don't do that would miss out on that. But I think we should be kept whole on that. And I think that's something that, that they might be able to accept.
Well, especially because of the unfunded mandates that they're requiring us to do these type of homeless issues, which we should do anyways, but because they're not giving us any funding to help, then we should probably lobby on our behalf to send testimony, whatever the LOC would like us.
So, so is there a consensus among the council that we should support these efforts by the LOC?
I do.
Yes.
Yes.
We can do, we can, that's good enough for us.
Okay.
And it's a short session, so.
Yeah, not much time.
They might already have public testimony, so.
Okay, thank you, Blair. So, are there any questions on the department director's reports? Anything for the good of the order? I just have one thing. We have our Film Fest Saturday. It's going to be great, so hopefully you can attend. One of two sessions, one at 10 or one at 11:30, I mean 12:30.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. It's really not a big deal. What happened to the clock?
I don't know.
Okay.
And to be honest, we don't use this room that often, so it probably hasn't been that, that long, but it probably just needs to have a battery.
Be opened up on that?
Yeah, well, I think the battery died, but also it, it's missing a part of, of the number 11, so the clock, the clock strikes 10 twice in, in this room. So, we need to do some work on that.
Thank you all for your patience.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.